I'm not sure if you can see this. I'm just trying to make sure. I don't want to get in the way of things. You might push me off.
I feel like it's a little something to do with my work.
Yeah, I'd like to look at it. Trying to get them out there.
Let me change the sound.
That was... To entertain anybody and everybody in that room.
Here.
I'm calling me over six o'clock. James, don't let me say the question.
Logan, thank you for the bond base. Get into this meeting. That will be directed to the city of this objective. There's a kind of name operating. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, the people of the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments. Long walk.
I've got a couple items canal. The first one is the courthouse. The decorations looks good. Mill dew looks bad. Can we do something about the mildew on the opposite side from what you're facing there Ricky? It's been like that for quite some time. It's starting from the top and then going all the way to the bottom. The second thing, gentlemen, we gotta do something about some shoulders on the roads in this county. We're gonna have some more serious wrecks. The other nine I was on my roll back coming back from Brockston and I hit the shoulder because I was blinded by some of these new vehicle headlights and I like the wind every which way but loose. And that was on the Brockston highway.
Thanks. Mr. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Please excuse me for not standing. Wanted to give you an update on the appeals from the assessment notices that were sent out. All of them that went to the BOE were decided in the county's favor. The Walmart appeal that went to an arbitrator, Mr. Kenneth Boss, was heard here last Friday. And with the information provided to him by Walmart, Jimas was able to redo their assessment. Mr. Boss raised their appraised value from 4.58 million dollars to 6 million dollars. They will have 30 days to appeal that to the board of, to the Superior Court. If they do not appeal that, that will be locked in for three years, 19, 20, and 21. There is one more appeal left and that will be held, I think it's next week, and that is with Greenbrier, which will be held by the Board of Equalization. But up to now, we are good to go with everything as it was and with Walmart with a million and a half dollar almost increase, that's always good news. Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you, sir. Approve a minute for November 12.
I'd most approve a minute for November 12.
I'll say.
In discussion. All vote. Approved paid monthly bills.
I'll take the money.
In discussion. All vote. Open seal bid for a roll off truck, Mr. Ross.
Appreciate all y'all taking the time and getting me in. Uh, we got two seal bids. Know y'all are in the, the bear deal. Another roll off truck. I really appreciate y'all. First bid is a white lighter, some matter. They had water off on the sheets and everything. Something on the space boat, the length types related. Uh, they will never be on this truck for 65 days on delivery.
How long will it?
Uh, 20 to 65 days.
To 60 days?
20 to 65.
Wow.
Like a mayor a year?
Cost a bid.
Bid is 156 to 10.
How much?
156 to 10.
Anybody here represent them, anybody can?
I have about a year. This one is, uh, turn of power.
What kind of trip is wrong?
Checking off everything on you. Delivery day a month, 90 to 120.
What kind, what brand?
This, um, Max.
Max.
Well, say you give me one. I don't waste.
And what way you have that?
Right line.
So that one, that first one, the trailer?
Yes, sir. You'll keep on giving them bids and make sure we give criteria and everything and then... Let's have a book for the Lord. The Lord's business means criteria.
I'll make the motion that we vote for the first bid of 156 to 10, if it means all of our objection.
And I'll say.
In discussion. All vote.
Thank y'all very kind of giving us all the time here. It's a good idea to do that. Appreciate it.
Thank you, brother.
Thank y'all.
Discuss and approve the mow under J A Young Road to install a two inch fire line. That's me.
And questions about that, we're, uh, putting that new saw mill in out there. We need to redone it fine. It comes on the Uval highway side makes a loop. And we just need to pour that two feet pipe under J A Young Road to complete that circuit to the blue warehouse house of J A Young Road. That's what we're looking to do.
So let's talk about that a minute because before my time, there was a big issue about mowing under roads. And I kinda got in on it right as I came in. So, uh, I think the commission, the previous commission, put some rules in effect like they had to be bonded, they had to be certified, things of that nature. So while I don't have a problem with doing it, I just wanna make sure that they follow the state guidelines that on the mowing under roads. I just like to make that comment.
Do you have a company in mind?
Uh, we got a couple that are bidding on it. We're still trying to figure out exactly where we're gonna come out at. Making sure we stay out of the railways and toward the power and things like that. So we don't know if we're sure we're gonna do it at. But we've got, uh, a couple companies that, uh, are interested in bidding on it.
Ain't, ain't that kinda?
My suggestion would be...
Well, if they cut somewhere, they'll be responsible for all of that.
Well, I'm more concerned about future problems with the road when you mow it down. Uh, so I would just wanna make sure that they were certified, bonded, everything up for them, not just let anybody mow under our road.
My suggestion would be we want to stay determined which company you're in. They have a representative of that company, kinda explaining the process to this board, exactly what they would do as far as drilling, what kind of pipe they'll be using, and what kind of insulating. Just so y'all are all clear because you know that. That way they're covered in it.
So, I mean, we could...
That's just my suggestion.
We could still vote tonight as long as that company met satisfied our, uh...
Yeah, can you get them to go okay based on that?
Right. I mean, I, I would, so I would, I would, uh, I would make a motion to okay them to get these companies to talk to us. And as long as they doing it in their way and...
They qualified.
They qualified, then we won't have a problem with it. Is that, is that fair enough?
Yes, sir.
And they can bring that to the office and I would...
That's what I was gonna say. I would, I would, you know, maybe come back to us.
Yeah, long as, long as they're bonded and, and, and we probably give somebody with state, you know, or either are paid. As long, as long as we can bear in mind that they're, if they're doing the right way and the right thing, I ain't got a problem. We'll verify. I make a motion to let them do it as long as they meet them specifications.
And I'll say.
In discussion. Thank you, all vote. Approved denied contract between Proto Care Service and Jeff Davis County for heart monitor for EMS.
Good evening, gentlemen, ladies. I think this is, uh, what came up, I believe you had this on your agenda last month, concerning the cardiac monitors that we have it, uh, that we've got on our, our units. To kinda give you an update on what this is, is just a service contract from somebody to come in and actually make, take care of our, uh, service on our monitors. Uh, we've not had that in the past and the reason being our monitors were under warranty. Uh, they're all for warranty now. So now it's time we've got to get a service contract or insurance on basically, or roll the dice to gamble and take a chance on what we're gonna do. Uh, we are having a few glitches with them. And I think one of the concerns were, was this something that was gonna be beneficial to the, to the citizens? Yes, it is. Uh, while we're looking at on the monitor, we need to make sure it's what's going on with the patient. Uh, if we misinterpret something on the monitor, fellas, there's a glitch and it can be detrimental to the patient. Uh, there's some things that's coming down with these monitors, uh, that's way over my head to try to explain. Uh, so I'm asking Ryan to come back with me. He's one of the came the other day with Stryker. They'd be the ones that know our, the services. Uh, to kinda explain what they service, how they service, uh, some of the components that go bad and then the actual cost they are to replace, uh, and kinda give you an idea and answer most of the questions. I'm just kinda here to open up the, the full of the discussion and let him get to the technical part for you. But we've got two monitors now that are at the point that need some servicing done. Either we're gonna have to go with a service contract and let them come in here and do that or either, uh, we're just gonna have to call them to come and fix, fix the problem.
What would, what would a monitor cost for a lot of different?
Uh, let's see. Have you got third?
I forgot what I was gonna say.
But it's... Heart monitor's 25, 30,000.
Uh, 32,600.
It's 15 hundred dollars a year to maintain, basically, 3,000, 6,200?
Correct.
Right.
And then what about the rest of them?
We only have two.
Really?
That's all we've got. We're hoping, we're hoping it's wise to help us out a little bit when all the other several purchases, power loads and such as that. We're hoping to try to at least get it up because we have four trucks and we have to move them one at a time and they're the different trucks that we're working against. The more you move ones, you know, more chance to cause us some problems with them. But we are, we have been doing that for the last several years. Just due to the fact of causing things, they are very expensive.
That's the, that's the heart monitor?
That's exactly right.
And this is kinda, that way to note, right? You only had two and they come off a warranty and that's the kinda question?
Right. That, that, that's it. We've got the two that are coming off of warranty. There are some little glitches going on with them now that we've got to have repaired, whether we have a service contract or not. And when I was talking with Ryan, uh, he told me, he said, you know, if you don't go with the service charge or with the service plan, it's gonna cause, could cause, depending on what's going on with each one of them. Or either you can get your service plan. That's why we didn't go ahead and get it fixed. We're trying to figure out which way the commission will actually move on this one. Uh, the same thing, while I'm talking to you about that and we can kinda shoot, still too birdie for one shot. Same thing with our, uh, uh, stretchers. Our stretchers have been all under warranty, but now we've got two that's coming out of warranty. Now, what you understand, we've got power loads, that's still under warranty. That's equipment with the truck. But we had three, three stretchers that we modified to fit. We did buy a new stretcher, we modified those. Two of those are coming out of warranty. So we're gonna need a plan on that also somewhere in the real, real near future. We've got one more stretcher that's gonna have, uh, I believe it's one more year on it in some of that neighborhood before it comes out. Our brand new model stretcher that we did buy is under warranty. So we're okay with that as far as having to get any kind of a service plan. But we are looking at some things down the line. Well, I say down the line, not too far. But we're at that point now where we need to either say we're gonna do some service contracts or we're not. But with the service contracts on the, uh, the, uh, the stretchers, and you correct me if I ever say they're wrong, right? Uh, it, it includes the travel, the labor, such as that coming here. It's actually got a replacement battery every year. Replacement batteries around $900. You don't catch them on a sale, a piece, or each one of the stretchers. Unnecessary time, or if it's not planned, scheduled for their, their service, we have to call them. All of that's covered also in the, in the service plan. So that's something we need to, we're gonna have to look at too.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve. I mean, 3,000, 6 bucks versus 32,000 dollars each.
All right, now that's, that will be for the cardiac monitors, right?
Right, to buy them.
Another comes up, we'll, we'll, yeah, right.
You wanna look at it or not?
Is it another?
I mean, it's not.
The two of them are other.
The other one are other, let's look at it.
We, all right. To look at that, it's another 2,600, 300, those, 2,108 dollars. That correct with a 20% discount we're gonna give them on those. And that will be to, uh, the service contract on two of the power costs.
And that's renewable every year? So it's not gonna just go into effect on that with the next year? Because it may come to a point where you need replacements to...
Right. Now, one thing that you can look at, uh, that's $2,000. For both, I mean, for two. Is that, is that per stretcher or per?
No, that's the total.
The total, so we're looking at 1,000. So basically, we're getting the insurance plan with it or a service plan plus a new battery. The batteries will just about pay per set every year.
Battery plan or...
That's right. If we're fortunate enough, we'll get four batteries this past time. We'll purchase a stretcher and they give us a 50% discount. So we actually come out way ahead on that deal. Of course, we have batteries for, uh, regular batteries somewhere around $900 states.
So 5168. Two heart monitors.
For the monitors, right. And then also for two, uh, the power costs. Stretchers.
I need a motion. I'll make a motion.
To approve both of them?
Well, we need probably come separate. If they're separate on the business, it's the other contract.
It's all, it's just...
Well, they're separate contracts anyway, aren't they?
Yeah, that's...
You'll have, you can put them under warranty.
And put them on, that makes what you... I'll make a motion to approve 5168 for a total of...
I'll say to that motion.
In discussion.
I like to discuss one thing about it. Since we only have two monitors.
Yes, sir.
And four trucks.
Yes, sir.
Four of the monitors total, we need to run two trucks.
We've got a handicap. But not to the extent it's not available for it. We do have a different type of monitor there. It's a soul monitor, which means nothing to you. But it does not have the same capabilities as these life packs do. A life pack's for if we've got a cardiac patient, we need to send that rhythm to the hospital. We can transmit it, our others will not. But the life pack, two things are actually what's called a 12 lead, where we just like to go to the hospital, they can do a EKG only. We can put all the leads on the, check it that way. Or on the other monitors, it's just the three lead, the basic, uh, cardiac monitor. It is workable. We worked it for years until we got these. Do we need some more? Sure, we'd love to have some more.
Yeah, well, I would, I would like we would need at least one and then we'd have a spare.
Do you have a, you say a spare?
We'd have a spare.
Well, we have one with the roof. They still have a spare because we've got four trucks.
15 of them, two at a time.
Two at, yeah, yeah, I know what you're saying. Yeah, two at a time, okay.
So I think when they live that, whether tonight or in the very near future or in the next budget, we need to look at getting another monitor.
Why don't we do this? Why don't you let Ryan and I get together and get everybody looked together in suspense and get you an exact cost on it?
Got it, if you want. I'm happy to wait, but, you know, in the next, it pairs.
That's good sell, bro.
He was the voice.
What we spend, what do we spend a year on this maintenance that he's gonna be covering?
Well, I know we're not gonna spend much, but...
More dollars under warranty, but, but when I take my truck and get it worked done, that's a deal.
Right.
But how much have we spent?
The warranty was under warranty, that's what I'm gonna do.
I think what you're asking is what is our historical spend, um, for the past years? Is that what you're asking?
Us, not nobody else.
Yeah, I don't have that in front of me. I don't know what, um, the prior repairs and what your prior spend was.
Honestly, I don't think there's been that much.
But, but if you do, so you haven't done any, had any warranty work done?
Just, just basic stuff. We've had the, well, the bushings or whatever we call the bushings.
Are you talking about cots now?
Cots, yeah.
So are you talking about just monitors or cots?
I'm talking about everything we're trying to monitor out here.
So far the...
Two items we've tried to run by.
All right, so far the monitors, we've not had a whole lot of that at all.
We've not had to, we've not had to replace a couple things as far as repairs. It's, it's quick check, blood pressures, uh, all that. So those were, well, I'm just telling you, those gadgets, something that they wear out and you have to replace it. But as far as the mechanics of the, the device, we've really not spent anything on that. The fact you remember. Now, the cots, we've had, where this, this cost to move them up and down with listens blow out or something. We've had to come in to get that, we've done. But anything as far as...
How expensive is that? I mean, you ain't got a price on that?
I don't have the price, no, sir, I don't have that.
The other thing I would point out is these contracts include annual preventative maintenance inspections, which also includes a certain level of calibration, especially for the monitors. It includes a significant amount of calibration. You have to understand, these are clinical pieces of equipment. So if your heart is in the turbulence, they're gonna shock you, right? Um, if there's issues with that from a liability standpoint, the level of documentation, um, that we provide and the support that we provide and the preparation that you really need to have to make sure that you got everything in place is a big part of what goes into that. Um, so calibrating the equipment on an annual basis is something that I would say is really important. Um, so if that hasn't been done, um, that's something that...
So if something, if something happens to that piece of equipment and a person dies and their family sues the county, you gonna be something, my liability.
Yep, so...
That's what I'm gonna say, right there.
Exactly. And that's where we, we're in lockstep with you because with, with all due respect, you guys have sovereign immunity. Um, and Stryker's a 13 billion dollar company that has no immunity. So when we're taking care of the equipment, we are hand in hand with you from a liability standpoint because they're gonna be coming after us just as hard, as hard as it can. But, but actually on the monitor, I wouldn't wanna do anything without going something of that magnitude of that price with many of these.
True.
Right.
Any more discussion? All vote?
Thank you.
Approved to hire EMS director. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
And I'll say it.
In discussion. All vote? Approved to hire assistant EMS director.
That's what we're editing and we...
I need a motion. Need a second?
Second.
In discussion.
Who made the first, please?
Please.
All vote? Approved to grant an easement to the city of Hager, located on Young Street for the purpose of water improvement.
Is this, is this one pertaining to the, you said?
Why, I mean, why, why they can't go down the street? It'd look like it's 10 feet on the side of the street.
Glenn, you know anything about that?
I don't know why. They, they probably didn't take it down the street. And I'm looking for the simple reason is they didn't want to have to go back and repave it or not because they're gonna have to go back and re-saw it regardless when they take and put the, they dig it up on the easement and everything. They're gonna have to go back and re-put the grass in and everything else there too. So I mean...
But 10, what I'm saying, 10 feet would be on the, in front of the gym, right? Because they would have to take up some of that concrete.
And I said, but I'm not really sure, but I think that would be the biggest reason is take it running down the, the sidewalk and it, or where it's at so it's not in the middle of the street and everything. And it may be for the hookup purposes of it too. Where they might have to take and branch into anything they hook up and they run the water line there. It'd be a lot easier to do that than it would be to dig the street up again.
Glenn, you know anything about that? I mean, you got property there.
The, the, um, I'm meeting with the mayor on that. Uh, we haven't met yet, but he called me on that easement of our community across non-property. So, um, I have admitted it.
You have met with him? The mayor, the mayor, oh.
I have not signed a lease with him yet.
I think should have had somebody to explain this.
I need a motion for table? Second. All vote? Approved to self engagement letter from Malden and Jenson for FY19 audit. In discussion. All vote? Set and approved. 220, 224, 5 feet.
Get changed, it's the same. It's the same as the change. I'll make a motion to accept the higher bids.
In discussion. All vote? This number 15, I talked to some commission, they want to establish a appointment of two members to the joint development board. They want to table to the next meeting. They want to table it to the next meeting. I need a motion, I make a motion.
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All vote?
That's been discussed.
Okay.
So, my, 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 when, you know, we appoint these boards, I would like to hear, and I know, I, we got to find a place, but I would sure like to hear from these other boards, of people that, that they might recommend.
Talking about other board members?
The other board members, you know, I would love to hear them. I ain't saying we go with what they say, but I mean, I, I think it would, it would be a better union, I guess you'd say, between us and other boards, to walk up to them, to get the people that they could come through, if possible.
I agree with that, it's really true that we had several that applied that weren't even, I mean, they couldn't, they didn't meet the original agreement, so...
So, what I would like to do, if we're gonna appoint two members, and we, let's just say we've got four people, I don't even know how many we got, but... But, but, you know, I would like a recommendation from that board. For why?
But what is the criteria? First of all, you gotta be a resident. We had some that applied that weren't residents, uh, we had others that didn't meet the legal criteria, and then we had some that applied as a joint application. So, basically, it'd be like you and your wife applying together.
Yes, exactly.
But that was, uh, didn't meet the criteria.
I, I think we'd be smart to do that with any board.
I do too, just, I mean, you don't want, not the stereotype or nothing, but you don't want high school teachers, you know, or whatever, or serve on the board, or, you know, you want people from a diverse background, that can bring different things to the table, and I'd love to hear what the development authority says as well.
What you, what you want to bring, Andrea, and let her, whichever one she recommends?
I'm saying that, I would like them to communicate with us somehow. Can that be done, Carl?
It can be, but you get in this situation that, you know, you probably don't wanna do it as a board, you know, you wanna have a committee, because they don't feel comfortable telling you in public, "Hey, I recommend, hey, overband, because you've been a little muddling," or, "We've got a personal issue with the pass," I mean, if you wanna talk to them, I don't think you do it in front of the whole board, you know? But if you wanna have a committee, if you really think, maybe, I don't see what you'd do. I'm just trying to...
Or I can talk to the A C, I only, I think fans will bother a little bit too, I don't wanna let them be our committee, and then they bring back this...
And that's the only reason we have the three of them, that weren't qualified.
Right, so I would, I would agree with that, y'all would let them two be our eyes here.
And I agree, Bill, that we gotta take this a little more seriously.
All the boards are just... Just what they hope to accomplish. I mean, we would appoint a committee each time.
Yep, right. I mean, what I'm saying is, well, in the board.
Yeah, right.
I mean, you got all kind of...
So, there's another one, maybe you and Brad may, may...
Right.
Sit over, you, you know, whatever, and, and do the research and...
Just stand up for thirty more, a whole board, that's what's happening.
Well, I expect that, we've got them all on.
Is that where you're gonna get in, like, Bishop Benjamin said, you got all these other committees you appoint, and you don't have so many, so many...
Let's just call them all on, and we'll table it to the next month.
Okay. I need a motion, we table this to the next month.
We just discussed...
We just discussed, you ready for a vote?
I'm ready.
Approved the boys' Christmas luncheon on December nineteenth.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say it. Any discussion? All vote? Approved to close on December forty-third at one P M.
That's what we're gonna do next.
I make a motion.
I need a second. Any discussion? All votes? Approved denied for boys' Christmas bonus.
All of them doing their, guys, is, uh, they're gonna do a hundred dollar gift card, full time, fifty dollars, you're walking in. That's what we're gonna do next.
What we been doing, haven't? I need a motion.
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I had someone call me, right, on the discussion side. No, 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 they, 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 they've mentioned to me about, um, doing it, you know, they've been working here, you know, they've been working here thirty years, you pay one deer for, I don't know if we can do, I don't know.
That'd be real tough.
No, but I'll, I'll just speak, I'm just saying.
Yes, the Christmas bonus is not a fair thing.
That's right, I mean, you know, you just got to, it's a, it's a threat, really, I think, you know?
All vote? Any newer old bench?
I would like to say that, uh, the meat packs, I, I, I want meat twenty, uh, forty-eight hours. The, the getting my, I need forty-eight hours in advance, I'm talking about... What's called working days, not weekend, for my meat packs. Like this came, uh, December ninth, at eight twenty-four in the morning, that it was ready. And I'm going to work, so I ain't really had time to go with this stuff.
I just, we had to wait until, you know, just get...
Oh, yeah, I, I... I, I really need mine, but I need to go in here.
Let me ask this question, that would be like an old email to you.
I could deal with that too.
That way you have one.
I, I got email.
Say, I got mine first.
Yeah.
You do have one, so email them.
Yeah, you, you, I, I would get it. I'm bad about my... Yeah, you need that, yeah, yeah, that's true. I might wish to...
That's still...
It was still a year.
In the year, you'll get your back here. But you get an email at half time.
I'd be fine, well, you can, you can get a package. I don't look at it more like during the night, you know what I'm saying? During the work, I ain't got that.
I understand. Got a good one?
Yeah.
With this email, and you're like, pack it here, when you go.
New bench, old bench?
Oh, Rob, he did say he needed a sweeper, he, he probably... He somebody in there, they did a rule up there.
I'll tell him through there.
What you were saying, uh...
What do you want?
If you have a sweater, then they can, when they cut edges like that, they can go back and clean it up. Yeah, 'cause that'd be all the kind, you're talking to a boy cutting, uh, the edges inside the road, you're gonna make a mess. But that's...
Any more new, the old bench? No, second, second.
I make a motion to go into the second session.
Second? All vote?
I'll say it. Okay, Mr.?
How are you, sir? Hey, Ron.
Hey, Eric.
How are you, Andy?
How are you? Well, congratulations on that. Well, thank you, sir, appreciate it, appreciate it. I know y'all did a good job, y'all always do. I, I hope y'all don't have to come see me. But please, pause your report. No, I was, they, they, they have a reason, there's nothing, they, they... We don't start... Yes, sir. Don't put a child away, it's a beautiful plan, anyway.
I need a motion, we go back in, open session.
I'll make a motion.
I need a second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion, vote?
I make a motion to amend the plan, the plan identified as number one from ACCG that they sent us, and their recommendation of what we do in cell litigation plan. So, I make a motion, we approve what they, the lawyers have sent us. And I'll say it.
Any discussion? All vote?
I need to make a motion to amend the end date of Kevin Matheson's appointment to be sent to the twenty-first, two thousand and third thing. Would you have that accounted?
I'll say it. Any discussion? All vote? Meeting.